Morning Mike.
Good morning Ray. Hope you had a good Christmas, hope your uh end of the year is going well.
So far so good, how about you?
Good mostly. Good, we got in from. California, you're up there for Christmas, we landed at one AM.
Oh boy.
And then we got our baggage and then we got home at two thirty, so that was good.
Oh.
I am tired.
Understandably.
Good morning Chris, see that you're joining us, apologies, I uh I was not on until.
Don't worry, it's fine, just just uh just so you know, um yeah, I'm on the road, so.
Okay, well honestly, this could be a very short meeting.
That's what I figured, yeah.
I have an update, uh I think it was gonna be a short meeting anyway, but now I have an update. Um. That I think the.
Great.
People like to know, um.
And you got it recording now, it sounds sounded like.
Yep, we are recording.
Okay.
We are recording.
I was in touch with Terry and he's um he's planning to be here.
Great, we just need two more, so.
You got confirmations from people, right?
I did, I did have confirmations that four would make it. Which is why. We had scheduled it for this time.
Yeah.
Doodle ball.
If you have phone numbers for any of those. Other people you were counting on, you might wanna call them, because even in my case, I had this reception thing and um. I would have forgotten if if my timer hadn't gone pong pong, you know, so just aside.
Yes, we had confirmations from. Melissa. As well as you and as well as you do um and Terry. So as long as Melissa can make it, ah. Yes. As long as Melissa can make it. How convenient.
Power.
So we're just waiting for Terry and then we will be good to go.
Oh, good, okay.
This'll be quick, just need to formally take an action. Morning Melissa. Up and she's down. That's fine, we'll get this figured out.
Ah, everybody.
Hey Terry. Okay, uh um. Melissa is struggling to unmute or start videos, so she's gonna try to come in from her phone. And then we will get started.
It was a little difficult to get the passcode in, maybe it. Took didn't take it three or four times and then it did.
Oh, that's weird, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe it's my morning duty, my mornings.
Hmm.
I am also suffering from morning brain, so I have a large.
Yeah, Chris.
Hi, thanks for your help this morning, Terry. Yeah, I had trouble with my phone not wanting to uh think it knew how to zoom.
Alright, so it seems like it's an everybody problem.
Here's Melissa.
Right, it's just connecting.
Yes.
There you are, morning Melissa.
Okay, I got it to work on my phone.
Fantastic.
I don't know why.
Alright, let's uh let's get the show on the road. Um. Uh eh Terry, you were uh appointed our acting chair last time, if you just. Continue to be our acting chair for this special meeting as well.
Alright, I'll be glad to accept that, so first of all, then let's state the purpose of the meeting.
Absolutely, so the purpose of this meeting, Mr. Chair, is to discuss the final uh unassigned lease. Which is the common fields, the committee was coming back and forth between whether or not it would go to Mr. Wells or Mr. Sterns. Um before we jump into that, we want to let you know that we have received an email. Um was sent yesterday and I got it this morning. Uh from Mr. Craig Sterns um that has withdrawn Mountain Berry from uh the request to lease any town lands.
Ah.
Wow.
Uh. I will just read that into the record here um for everyone's knowledge, um. Uh the Mountain Dairy quote is quote, honestly appalled that our application for the lease of Crane Hill was not considered more seriously. Mountain Dairy had farmed Crane Hill for several years and does envision of our dooryard. It is also appalling that the party the lease was awarded to is not a resident of Mansfield and not a taxpayer. I do not believe I need to state how long the Sterns farm has been farming and paying taxes in Mansfield. My family started farming bone mill these years ago as a favor to the town. It is not efficient for when the work we did to clean it up is not recognized by your committee, um. So. To to clarify uh moment, um so the the Mr. Bergeron, Mike Bergeron is in the process of buying the house adjacent to. Crane Hill Field and has been farming adjacent to it for years, so although he is not currently a taxpaying member of Mansfield. He has been trying to be for the past six months and there's been some hangups with his purchase of that property. Um but uh I wanted to bring that up because it does change around to of the field awards that we had otherwise made. Um uh there is no one else uh who was considered qualified by the commission um uh for Bone Miller Eagleville Field. Um so those leases are gonna sit open um if if the Sterns are not willing to take them. Um the common fields uh would now is an uncontested lease request of Mr. Tom Wells. Um and I reached out to Nate Wells um uh to get um explanations. About those questions that the committee had last time, um and I'm just going to pull up those answers here, um. Which uh the questions that I asked for further clarifications were about using corn as that transition crop to move away from alfalfa. Um we asked furthermore about the hay that was left in the fields after being baled um and why it was left to rot. Um as well as um whether or not there had ever been subletting of the field. Um and if they didn't have the capacity to hay it, um. And Nate called me back and said, um you know, we were we were intending to use corn because it's an easy transition crop, but we don't have to. Um because you, you know, you can't use atrazine on the field, you need something that's easy, that's gonna take quick. But we're not married to corn, we could do sorghum or millet or some other uh crop. And if the commission wants us to do that in our transition, they'd be happy to do so. They noted that um the reason that some of the hay wound up left in the fields was that. When they were going through with their baler, um it was in their view. Uh easier to finish up with the baling of all the areas, even those that were too wet and unsuitable. Um in order to uh get everything done, um and. Um Tom could answer more, I asked him to send us his answers in writing and he just didn't do it, we are in the holiday season. Um uh he also said that um you know, to the best of his knowledge, they've never sublet the work. They have worked with Mountain Dairy in the past, um so what has happened is uh this lot, the only people who weren't them. Who've done any of the work could be their harvesting um or any other work or folk from Mountain Dairy. Because a lot of this crop gets sold directly to them. Um so he said it, you know, if if you want us to write something up to say that this is, you know, something we may do in the future, we'll happily do that. We apologize, we hadn't realized that that wasn't workable, um but uh he said, no, we we have the capacity to to farm it. Um but that those were the answers to the questions that I had asked him. Um if there was anything else, I might be able to explain some of those other things too, because we spoke for a while. I apologize for my lack of forming expertise uh in terms of some of my understandings of how baling goes, I know that. And that's not an area of expertise of mine, you have a very cute dog, Melissa.
Would there be any comments from uh the members here about regarding to the that response?
I know when you bail a field that, you know, you can't go out and differentiate necessarily what is good and bad. And it's a lot easier, just go out there and bail everything and then separate it afterwards. So I think that's part basically what he said.
He noted, yeah, he noted that the couple of the the veils that got left in there, once they were wrapped, were left. Because um the the wrap failed, either there was a puncture or, you know, an animal ripped it open. Which broke the um anaerobic seal um that they were using for fermentation and so it started to rot. Um and that, you know, it wasn't like they left everything out there, it was only ones that weren't good.
I know from my own experience in making hay that um. There are some people that are neat and tidy and there are some people that, you know, they leave their sock drawer a little loose and. Unorganized, um and I think that's part of what we're dealing with here, uh you look at. If I can just say this, that Tom Wells's fields versus the Sterns fields, and there's a difference in the way they keep their sock drawer. Now, um that has resulted, in my opinion. In some loss of hay, which is really a piece of the normal operation, you just hope you don't lose too much hay to. Oh, wind damage, rain damage, uh veil that didn't get tightly wrapped uh and all, and and and, so. Part of that is just part of farming and um how much we look at or overlook that. Um is um. I guess part of what we, our deliberation is. Other comments, observations?
Uh it seems related to that, I think because we brought this up. It's it's kind of noted by him and we can certainly talk to him again about it if if it's uh if it's an issue, but. I'm not that bothered by it, um maybe it's more of an aesthetic thing than anything else, sure, we don't wanna be wasting resources either. But um you know, it could be that also, you mentioned the quality is was the issue presumably, but. It may happen that you have more hay than you need um in a given year, and so why bring it to the farm? Um so they also talked about using, I thought that someone did and I thought it was them, talked about using the hay as mulch. Um so it it, you know, isn't its use isn't completely lost, it's actually almost intended and it's frequently used as mulch in different applications.
Um what he said about, you know, um the quality of the hay is definitely, it's a very common thing to have, especially the edges of the field. Be a little on the wetter side than out in the middle. And um you know, often you'll bail stuff just to get it out of the way, because you don't want it to sit there. Um so I mean, it's very common to to bail. Hay that you know is not going to be used, um just to get it off the field so that new growth can come up and you can. Uh apply for another cutting, so I I don't have a problem with, you know, what he said, I think it jives with my experience with paying, so.
So I am, I'm very sorry to hear Mr. Stern's response, um. Given that he hasn't, he he hasn't been charged for the field, this has been a nice thing and. Sure, if in their view that they've they've been doing a favor for the town. Thank you for that, but um but this has been a a free lease for however many years, so. Um I'm sorry, I'm really sorry, he he, you know, kind of left in that way.
I have a question, since these are going to be sort of not assigned to anybody now. Um I know somebody that didn't put in an application because um. He just knew that it was gonna go to Mansfield residents and he lives just literally over the line in Ashford, like. Next door to me, like literally next door to me, um and they raise um small scale like beef. And then they sell locally the extra hay that they hay. Um but he didn't apply because he just assumed that like he wouldn't get it, because he was technically Ashford. So are would we allow other people to apply now or is it just could be something that just stays with the people that currently have it or?
No, so I think that, so so since we don't have any what I'm gonna call valid applicants for these, I'm not going to refer the leases that um. Would have gone to Mr. Sterns, had he still wanted them, um put the commission vote to um. I'm not gonna refer this to the town council, because he he doesn't want them, we need a willing party. Um so we're gonna have three fields that we could hypothetically lease to someone else. Um I'm gonna talk to Jennifer about what would be um prudent in terms of the time period to open up for people. If we wanted to do a second round of these, I know we're all getting fatigued of um, you know, these kinds of discussions of are these good? Um but uh I I don't think there's anything that says you have to be a resident of Mansfield. Particularly because we do try to do broader integration of the surrounding towns and a recognition of. Uh farming doesn't necessarily follow town lines. So uh I just, I have to talk to our attorney and um Jennifer about it in terms of, we we probably have to reopen the RFP process. Since we would ask for a new round of these, we didn't get anything suitable, um you know, what's a reasonable time period to do that? Um but uh I'll get back to you at that for our next regular meeting, um and give you some information there. Because I I think that would be great to have more small scale producers.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and alternative to that is to say. That we have proceeded through a defined process and have made our marks. And are down to. I get.
Three.
Applicants and uh we should, unless we have any reason to discount. Both of them. Um there is no compelling. Um urgency to open it outside of the rules that we have have been established.
Yeah, well, I don't know what those rules are, but it technically or just frankly, we did um. In approving the the Bergeron um lease. Lease to an outside of town person, I think it's more, I think personally, it's more that we want this land to be in active farming. Um that's, you know, more than anything else, um that at least that's the first first box to check and the second box is, you know, what's the proximity of the farmer? And how to how uh just as the questions we asked, how relevant is this? This farming operation to the town of Mansfield's residents, economy, anything like that?
So let's go back and clarify the Bergeron application, is it, was it valid, uh? Is it an acceptable alternative, uh can you help us, Michael, remind us? Um. Is it? Is Bergeron a an acceptable uh alternative here?
Yes, so so with regards to that field, uh we we believe that Mr. Bergeron's application was valid, yes, um. I mean, it, one of the questions on the application is, uh are you a Mansfield resident, but it's not. It it's not a requirement, you know, um the the town is under no obligation to only lease farmland to Mansfield residents. It's perfectly valid and um this commission voted because it found that his uh request to grow vegetables was. Um something they were interested in, um you, in my opinion, done everything correctly, um at least as far as you have power to recommend that we do this. Um and I think the information provided uh between the application and the interview was sufficient for you to make that decision.
Oh, so this, what remains then is.
We're voting on common fields.
Exactly.
So. Say it again, Michael.
We're voting on common fields, so if the commission feels ready uh to make a motion to. Recommend that the common fields be leased to Mr. Tom Wells, um then that would be the motion on the table. Um and then when that is done, I will get these all before the town council in January.
I'll make that motion.
I was gonna say, we, sorry, I I was just gonna say, do we need to discuss the cover feel or the cover crop thing first or is that?
Yeah, I mean, so that could be a a condition of the motion is to not use corn as a cover crop for the transition of the crop.
I mean, I don't really, I mean, I just know corn's not typically a cover crop, uh but I know that Diane had some strong feelings about. The corn in terms of that area, I don't know about the other alternatives that he put out, does anyone else know about those other crops? I know nothing about them, so um.
I really, I only know academic things about sorghum and millet and I can't cook with sorghum to save my life, so I can't comment on it's wrong.
I know birds like millet, that's about all I know about it.
I I I think in this case, it would be um appropriate to say our preference, but I wouldn't be inclined to make it a requirement. I mean, he's he's um, we presume um farming in in conventional ways. Um he's not doing anything exotic and some introduced other introduced plants, so um. Again, our preference ought to be enough, just as our preference ought to be enough on. Let's get the bales out of there and not have it looking the way the way it did and was kind of. People were making making uh, it was drawing attention to itself, which we don't really want in that way.
Can we draw all this into a motion? Chris, you wanna?
Um well, I think. I think.
I I'll make a motion that we approve, I think we make a, I'll make a motion that we approve. Rose's application, uh we can pass along when we tell him about his approval that we'd like the field cleaned up and. We have a preference towards that corn, but it's not a mandatory crop.
Melissa, does that cover it for you, because you were you were concerned, you you brought up.
Well, not concerned, just that that was originally one of our questions and I thought that before we voted on it, we should probably talk about that for a second, that's all.
Okay, are you satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other comments, Chris?
No.
Need a second.
I have a second.
Okay.
I would second, okay. Michael, you wanna kind of repeat what we've.
Sure, so the motion that I'll write down in the minutes for this will be to approve the. Uh, lease, recommend the approval of the lease of common fields to Tom Wells, um, with. The recommendation that, uh, cover crops other than corn be considered for the transition of the field. From hay into, from alfalfa into.
And remove those bales.
And the removal of the existing bales.
Good. Alright, that's the motion, should, uh. All in favor, say aye or hand your, put your hand up.
Aye.
Alright, that passes then unanimously, Michael.
Perfect, well, that was the only item of business on our agenda.
You'll go for coffee now?
Uh, I'm gonna go get more coffee, um, and, uh, I'll look into those, that item for your, uh, uh, your friend Melissa, um, and. Yeah, their contact info, feel free to pass along with me to me.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can.
Be good to have that clarified.
In reality, we now wanna try to pursue. People for any, you know, any of these other ones that are now available, so, um, onward.
Let me, before we depart, I wanna go back to just, uh. Open the Bergeron conversation just a bit, it, he, we would consider him in the future. To be a, uh, uh, an acceptable, uh, applicant for whatever he would choose to, uh, apply for, is that correct?
I think, so, I mean, in staff's opinion, yes, do you, do you have doubts about that?
I have no doubts, in fact, I kinda like the idea, but, uh. Just wanted to make sure that, uh, would be an open conversation in the future. Okay, well then, is there any other further business that? We need to make as the agriculture committee today?
Not from staff's standpoint.
Alright, well, let's go have Christmas.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everyone.
They like to make an emotion to adjourn.
I'm readjourned.
I vote for it.
Then we're adjourned.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Bye bye.
Alright, goodbye.